All the July 21st, 2025, meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to order, and welcome each of you who are here this morning. Good to see so many faces. I know there's some out in the hall waiting to come in as well. I did want to remind everyone of the board's six priorities. They are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. As is traditional for us, we will open with the invocation and a pledge. I've asked Vice Chairman Harris to lead us in invocation, and the pledge will be led by American Legion Post 109 out of Benson. So if you choose to do so, please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray together. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you in Thanksgiving this morning. Father, we thank you for this day and the beautiful sunshine, the opportunity to gather here today as a group. Lord, we just ask that you bless us with understanding and good decisions and the opportunity to do what's right for people. Lord, we just pray for those in need. We ask that you bless the things that we do and say here today. In Jesus' name, amen.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First item is approval of the agenda. I believe there are a couple of adjustments that need to be made to that.
Mr. Chair, on move, we approve the agenda with the following changes. Item number five, the Public Utilities Buffalo Road Parallel Force Main, we'll move that to the August 4th meeting. And then item number seven, Johnston County Boys and Girls Clubs, Clubs Youth Voice 2025, like to move that up to just under item three after public comments.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. Next up, we have eight items on the consent agenda. I will attempt to summarize these, as there's a lot of subparts to those. We have approval of our June 2nd, 10:00 and 6:00 o'clock meeting, and approval of our June 9th and June 16th, 6:00 p.m. meetings. There are some additions to the DOT system. The Sheriff's Office requests to surplus vehicles and schedule a public auction. That auction is scheduled for September 13th at 10:00, and at our Shelter Way facility. Town of Salwa and Town of Smithfield both have appointments to their Board of Adjustment. We have some budget revisions. We have the Health Department, which has a $235,000 revision for unspent funds be carried forward, and $45,000 for state grant. We have LEO separation from the Sheriff's Office, $125,000 to move to recover, to cover salaries and benefits. Also, $23,000 to move revenues into the appropriate expenditure line items. And for social services, we have a couple. We have a $20,000 to budget trust account invoices through the end of the fiscal year '24, '25, and another almost $20,000 to move into the correct expenditure line items. We also have a couple of bond-related issues for the Finance Department. The first is a $33.7 million general fund move for our '24 referendum. And then the other is $47 million from our 2022 referendum. Those are both seller bonds there. And then the Health Department, we also have, and this is for this fiscal year, $26,500 grant awarded to the Johnston County Environmental Health for purposes of sending staff members to get some training. And then $323,000 Medicaid cost study supplement funds from fiscal year '24. We also have an appointment to our Nursing Home Adult Care Home Community Advisory Board. And then we finally have our tax releases and refunds from May 16th through June 15th of this year. Those are all the items on our consent agenda. Any item need to be pulled for additional discussion?
Not sure.
All right.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Now, that brings us to public comment. And I would ask Paulette Williams, our Human Resources Director, to come forward. I think we have some retirements.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mark's Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. Today, we would like to recognize our upcoming retirees for August of 2025. We wish to recognize Ms. Leon Kilbrew, who is with our Johnston County Public Health Department, Marcus Shane Pilkington, who is with our Sheriff's Office. And then today in attendance, we have Mr. Rodney Byrd, also with our Sheriff's Office. So we would like to invite you, Mr. Byrd, to come up and to take a picture with our Commissioners.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate you.
All right. Now, this is the time of public comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda to come forward, you have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone wishing to come forward for public comment? All right. Seeing none. And Madam Clerk, there were no emails this week. All right. So we have no emails. So we will move on to the next item, which was one we moved is, and we have a representative from the Johnston County Boys and Girls Club. And I think Ms. Kaylin Gonzalez is here to speak to us. So if you would come forward. It's good to see you this morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kaylin Gonzalez, and I am a club member of Boys and Girls Club of Johnston County. I am representing the Boys and Girls Club of Johnston County and the Youth Voice of 2025. Thank you for allowing to present and share why I feel the Boys and Girls Club of Johnston County is essential for the youth here in Johnston County like me. I am 14 years old, and today I'm happy and thriving, but at one time in my life, I was saddened by my choices. At school, I would feel unheard because sometimes teachers would not have the time to sit and have a conversation with me. I would get into lots of trouble. I had to move schools constantly, so making new friends and finding good places thing has not been easy. When my aunt told me that I was going to be joining a Boys and Girls Club, I was worried that I wouldn't have anyone on my side. But that was far from the truth. Being a club member of the Boys and Girls Club of Johnston County has changed. I love having a place where I can hang out with kids my age and feel comfortable. The club helps me have a safe and happy place to go to every day. The club helps me prepare for the future, and it helps me decide who I want, who I want to be when I grow up and what dreams I have. And then the club has treated me and the staff with, club members, with kindness and respect. They show us what it's like to be welcomed and loved. I am an LIT for the summer, which stands for Leader in Training. I am learning lots of new things in building my character and leadership skills. I have gotten the chance to see firsthand what a difference the club makes in children's lives. My favorite part of the summer with the Boys and Girls Club so far has been swimming, kayaking, fishing, going on field trips, and participating in summer reading programs at the club. Without the club, I wouldn't have been able to do any of these fun activities. I'm looking forward for more field trips, leading how to make, learning how to make pottery, playing kickball, making more friends. Thank you. I love the Boys and Girls Club. I think it's essential for young people in our county. Every child deserves a chance to experience all the good things the club has to offer. Youth in, at the club have healthy snacks, academic support, friendship and leadership. Not every child in the Johnston County has a great life at home, but every child has a, has the chance to have a great experience at the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Hold on one second. I think you may have some comments for you. Since you got up early this morning, maybe not early, to come and speak to us, but any, any comments for Kaylin?
I like the idea of being a leader in training.
Yeah, that's great.
That's very impressive at 14. That's very impressive.
And you did a good job this morning.
Yeah, a lot of courage.
And I would just say that I would hope after you had the swimming and kayaking and all the other stuff, you presenting to the Board of Commissioners, I'll join that list somewhere at number 21 or somewhere way down that list. Thank you for coming this morning and doing such a great job presenting to us. You did a great job representing the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get a picture. Sure, yeah. Let's get a picture.
Kaylin, is that your mom with you?
Um, my aunt.
Aunt. Okay, great.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good morning. You know, I like my picture, man.
Hey, Jane.
What? All right, I'll take the picture. Thank you all. Could I have one?
Yeah, we got some more here.
Let Heather come join us. Heather, come join. Okay, three, two, one. Perfect, y'all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Ellen, good luck. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right. The next item up is a public hearing for the Johnston County Water and Sewer System Development Fee Study. And I will now open the public hearing and call on our Utilities Director, Shandra Farmer, to begin the presentation. So we'll be here for a second.
I'm not going to keep you too long.
You got a lot of stuff to cover, so.
I do. We do have quite a bit. Some of the initial items that I'll present are things you've seen before. The system development fee is the way that is calculated and regulated by statute. It's, it's not changed in recent years, so you've seen some of this initial stuff before. But I'm going to start with the system development fee analysis, the updated analysis we have completed. And then the second half of the presentation will be specific to our bulk capacity fees. That's for our bulk water and sewer customers, such as the towns and private utilities that purchase from us. As I referenced a while ago, the system development fees, this is section law 2017, 138. This gives local government units authority to charge water and sewer system development fees. Again, this has really not changed since 2017. We've gone through this several years. You can see, we started, our first analysis was done in 2018. We updated it in 2019. We updated it in 2023, and we have updated this in, in 2025. And the key for system development fees is it recovers capital costs that are incurred to provide system capacity to new system users in our system. And as I've said many times before, this allows growth to pay for growth to the extent we want it to. The methodology to calculate the fee, again, this is the same that was presented last time at our system development fee hearing. There are several methods we can use per the statute. The county uses the combined cost method. That is based on a blended value of our existing assets and capacity and our expanded proposed system capacity, our proposed projects. So the procedures to adopt the system development fee include, we have to have an analysis prepared by a financial professional. We have hired Will Dan Financial Services to complete this analysis for us. You can see they have to use general accepted accounting, engineering, and planning methodologies. And a big component of the analysis is our capital improvements project. We can go, we have to use at least five years or we can go up to 20 years. And for our analysis, we've used our 20-year capital improvements plan. The, the analysis has to be posted online for at least 45 days. We posted our initial analysis online on May 13th. We did amend the document slightly on June 26th and posted that update on the, on the website as well. During this 45-day period and afterwards, until it's adopted, we have the authority to make modifications to the fee analysis if we, if we need to. We're required to hold a public hearing, which is what we are doing here today, July 21st. Then after the, following the public hearing, the board would adopt this fee, the system development fee by resolution or ordinance. And then we publish that, of course, yearly in our, in our annual budget. It becomes part of that budget. We are also required by statute to update this analysis every five years. And as you can see from the dates I referenced earlier, we're a little ahead of that. We try to update it a little more often, just because we've had such a, a growing and ever-changing capital improvements plan, based on the growth we have here. The first thing that we do in this analysis is identify our recoverable costs. And recoverable costs include our existing assets and our planned assets. These, these assets have to be projects that allow for capacity in the system. So for example, in our water system, this would include storage facilities, elevated tanks. It would include treatment facilities, major transmission lines, major booster stations. And for sewer, again, it's very similar. Treatment facilities, collection lines, transmission mains, pump stations, booster stations. Very similar. The key to that is that it's, it's capacity building projects. So when we go through our specific analysis, you can see we have analyzed the county's existing assets by water and wastewater. Then after we look at those existing assets, we look at our planned assets. Planned assets is our capital improvements plan. Again, it's specifically capacity expansion projects. So our treatment plants, our purchase of additional capacity from neighbors, our transmission system improvements. Then we also have the component of construction work in progress. So that's projects that are maybe not on the CIP right now, but they're already under construction. They were on the CIP. We just have those already budgeted and accounted for. They're, they're underway. Projects that are excluded from this are any projects that are funded from grants or direct appropriations, any developer contributions, developer constructed facilities, rehab replacement projects, or operational efficiency improvement type projects. Again, the key here is it has to create capacity in the system to be included in this analysis. So when we go to the county's 20-year capital improvements plan, and I know there's a lot of information on these next few slides, and understand you can't read all of that, but this is just to kind of give you a general summary of what we have included in our analysis. The first slide shows our water capacity, treatment-type capacity projects. So you can see I have included here the first, of course, there's the column that has the project name. Then we have the project cost over the 20-year period. That includes the full 20-year period cost associated with each project. And then the last column in red assigns a percentage. So that percentage identifies whether it's a capacity building project or not. So you can see those projects, initial, those initial projects that are for new treatment capacity, those are 100%. The ones at the bottom, such as security upgrades and rehabilitation projects, those are 0% because they're not included in this calculation. The next slide, this one's even more difficult to read, but this is our proposed transmission projects, our water transmission projects over the next 20 years. We've gone through the same process with these, with the total project cost over 20 years, and then the percent that's assigned for capacity building for each project. And the next piece of our capital improvements plan is the wastewater treatment category, which we've done the same analysis on this as before. We identify which projects over the 20-year period build capacity in the system, or what percent of those projects builds capacity in the system. And then we do the same for our wastewater transmission projects. And one of those projects, you'll see I have in blue, and I had zeroed it out. And the difference with that one is what's published on our website includes a value for that project, but for our modified analysis, we are taking out the value of that project as it's being constructed by a, a private developer. The county would not have funds in that project. So after we identify all of these recoverable costs, again, with our existing assets and our 20-year capital improvements plan, we, we add this up. Again, that's the continued analysis there with the combined recoverable costs. And the next step we look at is debt service. So debt service credit is applied, we, we include a credit in this analysis, so we prevent new customers from paying from debt twice. We don't want them to pay for debt on the same asset in their system development fee and then pay for debt service on the same project in their monthly user rates. So this credit is required in this analysis. And the credit is, has to be equal to the outstanding principal remaining on all outstanding utility-related debt as of the date of this analysis. And in no case can that credit be less than 25% of our aggregate cost of our capital improvements plan. So as we go through that analysis, again, we take those recoverable assets, we take our debt service credits, apply to that. Then we come to the system capacity piece. So we've got, we've got the value of the net, of the existing assets and the value of the future assets. We go to the system capacities that those assets have created or will create. And again, the purpose of this system development fee is for new customers to pay for their proportionate share of this system capacity that we've either already built or we are building. And this fee is based on, we, the reason we need this system capacity is so we can calculate a unit cost of capacity. And we do this several ways, several items we need in this analysis. We identify the capacity of our treatment and our transmission facilities. We then quantify our non-revenue water. So in our retail water system, for example, we know there's water that's unaccounted for. There's, there's system flushing, there are breaks, there's leaks. Those, those, that water has to be paid for in some manner. So there's a factor applied to this capacity to account for that, to ensure we can recoup a cost for that. On the sewer side, we have to quantify our inflow and infiltration. And then we determine a level of service. So typically, the way this fee is applied for residential development is as per equivalent residential unit. So we, we take the anticipated usage in gallons to come up with what that equivalent ERU cost should be. So the first piece of that, as I said, was the capacity calculations. We'll look at the water one first. The water analysis, we look at our existing treatment capacity and then our proposed treatment capacity in our capital improvements plan. One difference I will point out here from the analysis that's on our website and the analysis that I'm presenting today is the City of Raleigh capacity. We have a short-term water supply contract with the City of Raleigh. We currently purchase up to two and a half million gallons a day from them. We have been talking with them very recently in increasing that to, for an additional two million gallons a day. City of Raleigh is, seems agreeable to that, and they've indicated that will be still a short-term contract for 10 years. So that 10 years of capacity from City of Raleigh is gone by the end of our 20-year planning period. So we don't include that capacity in our total capacity available for this calculation, because again, at the end of our planning period, the City of Raleigh capacity is gone, and we've built, we've done more expansions to our new water treatment plant. So we count that capacity in the new water treatment plant expansion as opposed to City of Raleigh. We can't double count that capacity.
So if that were to go to 20 years through some shrewd negotiation, would that then go on the list? Does that qualify?
If, if it were still available at the end of 20 years, then, then yes, we could include that in that. But for right now, they've indicated if we renew today in '25, it would be good till '35. So we're currently proceeding with that calculation on, on this analysis. So when we look at our combined water system capacity, we're at that 43.95. As I said, we stepped through that with our non-revenue water, with our transmission capacity. And as we look at this with our, all of our total costs and the total available capacity, we come up with $39.07 per gallon for the per gallon rate. We, and if you take that and use 230 gallons per day, per ERU, per residential unit, then it comes up with a maximum of $8,980 per ERU residential. Now, this, I'll keep, I will remind you that the system development fee analysis is the maximum that we're allowed to charge by statute. Okay. When you look at the sewer analysis, this was based on 20 million gallons a day being available at the end of the 20-year planning period. We looked at a I&amp;I capacity adjustment, and we looked at the, the thing that changed this year, changed a little bit on our sewer side, is we now have to use 75 gallons per day per bedroom. And we're basing that on three and a half bedrooms per unit. The stack, that's a new stat, rather new statute. Used to, prior years, the county used, last time we did this analysis, we were using 80 gallons per day per bedroom. That is what the county was permitting at. Now we permit based on the new statute, updated statute of 75 gallons per day per bedroom. So this analysis, we're using less, less gallons to calculate the ERU for sewer than we previously were. And that accounts for the reduced rate. What we are looking at right now for sewer is $14.84 per gallon, which the cost per gallon slightly went up, but the ERU cost of $3,890 has slightly gone down. And it's because the number of gallons we have to use to calculate that ERU. So what does this mean for our system development fees? How, how do we look at this? This is the water one. How do we look at going from our current rate of a new, single-family residential, three-quarter inch standard service is, the system development fee is $4,750. Based on our calculation, the maximum we could charge would be $8,980. So I have a proposed schedule to recommend stepping towards that $8,980. Of course, the board can, you know, take what action you want to, but proposed going next fiscal year to $6,000 for the three-quarter inch residential service. And before we get to the 8980, as we know, as we have recently seen, our capital improvements plan changes, the cost to build facilities has been changing. I would recommend before we go back to, before we get into fiscal year '27, '28, we would have updated this analysis again. So very likely, the end of 20, or in 20, in fiscal year '26, '27, we would update this analysis to see where we are and what's appropriate. If there's major changes between fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27, then we would update the analysis again. And as you can see, you know, when this, this is, I focused here on the residential rate, but this certainly affects our other customers, which are non-residential customers, and the various meter sizes for those significantly continues to, you know, to increase those, those fees. And those are calculated based on the impact that that meter size can have on the county's system. So sewer, when we take the analysis I showed a while ago and apply it to sewer, that one's a little different in the fact that the residential ERU, it is reduced. The sewer system development fee would slightly go down. It's currently $4,020. We would go ahead and go to the new rate of $3,890. And the gallon per day amount did increase slightly, so if we have to apply the gallon per day rate, we would use the new updated gallon per day rate of $14.84 per gallon per day. Any questions on the system development fees before I go to bulk capacity fees? And I will say, this is the public hearing. My intent is to present all the data today, based on any feedback that you may have or feedback we receive. I would come back next month with the final recommendations on the system development fees and the bulk capacity fees.
Shandra, I have a question. You mentioned the maximum that may be allowed. Is that the maximum allowed by the calculation, or is there a, a limit placed in the enabling legislation for these system development fees?
It's the maximum allowed in our calculation that was conducted under the statute calculation.
Okay. So the cost of our system development, based on the formula that must be used, that maximum is determined through what our true costs are?
That's correct. Through our projects, all of the data input, you know, the existing projects we have, the existing assets we have, that's how we calculate it.
So there's no limit being imposed otherwise? It says you can go up to this amount as a max?
No.
Okay. That's very helpful.
I had a question as well, just to help. All this information, as well as for the people that are watching live stream and general public. public, so like, back on the last slide of the water where it says the residential new construction, so for fiscal year '25, '26, so let's say a subdivision goes in, it's 20 lots, each lot would be required for that $6,000, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that would be on the, typically the developer pays for that? Or would it be the homeowner?
So it, it has to be paid in order to, when they apply for water and sewer service, which they have to do that before they get a building permit. So typically, it's either the developer or the builder is who's going to pay that.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. Shandra, is this, this slide is residential or non-residential?
So the top two lines, the top two rows, or I should say, the, the top, the top row is of course the column headers, but the next two rows are the existing residential proposed rate and the new construction residential proposed rate.
Just the top two?
Yes, the top two, as you go across.
And then everything else is non-residential?
Yes, and I should have identified that better. Yes, everything else is non-residential.
Okay, alright, thank you.
We currently apply the same rate for residential, no matter the, the meter size. And that is based on the fact that we do have a higher usage rate for residential. They have an increasing block rate when they pay their commodity charges monthly, so the more water they use, the more they pay. We don't do that with the non-residential.
Anybody else have a question? So I, I have one, and it is, and I doubt you're gonna pull this one out because it's a little different. So what, at the proposed rate, well, I guess what I would like to see is at the proposed rate, based on what we see history to be and maybe some, some growth or whatever that number is, if it is, assuming it is growth, what that total revenue would be and collected in system development fees for '25, '26? And then also at the maximum rate, if we could, if you could get that for us?
Right, I can certainly do. It's built into our model, our financial model that we have, it's just based on the estimate of new, new services. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we had been, we have been using, was it 3% growth for immediate years? Yes, so the next couple of years, it was a 3% growth rate of our 49,000 customers, so 3% of the 49,000 times 6,000 versus 89.
Okay, if you would still send, yeah.
That I could give you that information, yes.
If you still send that to us, I don't wanna do the math in right here either.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, we're on to the bulk.
Okay, so the next section of this is our water and sewer capacity fees for bulk customers. As we have gone through this analysis, I'll say that we are looking at a formula very similar to the system development fee analysis, of course, with some, some differences. Again, the bulk capacity fees for our water, bulk water and sewer customers, it's a one-time fee, but supplied new flow requests from our bulk customers. Our bulk water customers purchase capacity in accordance with their specific inter-local agreement or in accordance with our water capital capacity charge policy adopted by the Board of Commissioners in 1997. Our bulk wastewater customers purchase capacity in accordance with our inter-local user-specific agreements, and that is specific to Smithfield, Selma, Pine Level, and Four Oaks. Those are our customers who purchase ongoing wastewater capacity. Any bulk customers purchasing capacity beyond that, any other bulk customers would require a specific inter-local agreement for that capacity purchase.
So the, on the water side, is it all 11 of our municipalities are bulk?
That is the ones who have water systems, so it would be nine of those. Well, I shouldn't say all of them, because they don't all purchase capacity from us. It's...
Archer Lodge and Wilson Mills?
I shouldn't, all, all of them actually purchase a little bit in some form or fashion. They may not purchase their full amount, but other than Archer Lodge and Wilson Mills, yes.
Okay. And are there any other entities that are bulk water and/or sewer?
So, so we would also, we have two other ones, and that is Aqua NC, which is a private utility company, and then we have Carolina Water Service. Those two also purchase bulk water capacity from us routinely. And then, and they have specific inter-local agreements for their purchases and how those are to be conducted. Their rates are the same as others, they don't, their water rates are the same as others.
And Aqua is Flowers?
Aqua is Flowers Plantation and Carolina Water Service is Whit, Winston, thank you. They also provide service in White Oak, but that one's existing. Winston's the one that's still building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Again, as I said, we use a formula that's similar to our SDF because we wanna look at all of our system capacity and the cost for that capacity and come up with a rate and call, the cost per gallon rate. One thing we've done in the analysis is we go through the capital improvements plan and we remove any projects that are specific to our retail customers only. If it's a project that would not apply to our bulk customers, we, we have taken that out of our capital improvements plan for this calculation. We've also removed the added cost factor for non-revenue water. The reason we do that is we have master meters that are interconnects with each of these bulk customers, and they pay for all the water that goes through that meter. So if they've got water losses, they're paying for that water loss in, within their system. We have also, on the sewer side, removed the added cost factor for sewer inflow and infiltration, because it's the same concept. If they have INI in their system, when they pump it out of their system and it goes through that master meter to our system, they're paying for every gallon that comes through there. One thing we are proposing different this year on our rate structure for water capacity fees for the bulk customers is to evaluate this by hydraulic zone. The county has three hydraulic zones that we operate within the county, 323, 385, and 492. Our existing water treatment plant's located in our 385 hydraulic zone, and all of our water comes out of the plant at that 385 hydraulic zone operation. And we pump it, so we, once it comes out at 385, then we bump, boost it and pump it up to the 492 zone, or we have a control valve that reduces the pressure and allows it to gravity flow back to our 323 zone. I mentioned earlier?
So does, does those three zones somehow the boundaries equate to our water districts or no?
Not exactly. They're sort of, I mean, some of our districts are on boundaries, but not exactly.
Okay, so you may have a district?
We can have a district split by hydraulic zone is very possible.
Do we, how do, how do we handle? Well, I'll let you finish, then we'll see how you handle that.
Okay, well, and I, and I'll say that I'm proposing the water capacity fees for bulk customers to be by hydraulic zone for our bulk customers only. Our system, our retail customers would pay the same rate.
Okay.
Okay, so the first piece of, when we look at the system, I mean, the capital improvements plan specific for bulk customers is we look at the water treatment. This is the same as the one we use for our retail customers. Water treatment capacity would be available for all retail customers and bulk customers, so we use the same CIP there. The next CIP we look at is our transmission one. This is the one where there are significant number of projects to move water, boost water to our 492 transition zone. A big reason for that is, again, we have to boost it there, so it takes more projects, more pumps, more pipelines. And that is where our highest demand is currently within our system, is our 492 zone. So all those that say 100%, they're still 100% applied to this 492 transmission calculation. When we look at our 385 transmission zone, this is where the water comes out of the plant, the immediate, the 385 area zone. You can see the blue ones, the blue columns where it's red and blue, the blue are the ones that we have removed, and those projects are not necessary for our 385 zone. The bulk customers in that zone do not need those projects that are in blue and zeroed Doing the same for our 323 zone. As I mentioned earlier, water comes out at 385 and it gravity flows back to 323. 323 is where we currently have our, our lower demand, our bulk customers in that zone generally have a lower demand. And the existing facilities, the large lines we already have that go to those bulk customers, our 16-inch mains that flow back that way, are generally sufficient for supply to those areas. So again, same thing with the blues, zeroed out the ones that are not necessary for 323. Okay? Same calculation that we did, similar calculation that we did earlier, we identify the capacity available at the 20, at the end of the 20-year planning period, 43.95 million gallons a day of treatment capacity. We take that and look at the, wanted to point out, the capacity allocations here do consider a peak factor. There was, you know, when we sell capacity, we typically sell it and look at it on an average day, we evaluate capacity on an average day. But the cost of the capacity, this was the same in our system development fee calculation. When we value the cost of capacity, we look at, we include a factor for a peak day, because we know there's gonna be higher usage some days than others. And when we take that calculation all the way through and we look at a cost per gallon, we come up with $27.37 for the cost per gallon for treatment. And then we have the additional costs, you can see I have divided underneath for the transmission to each of those zones. When I presented the analysis for the system development fee and told you a cost per gallon, that's a combined, that's treatment and transmission. This one, because we're proposing to assess the fee by hydraulic zone, you can see we have that broken down by treatment and transmission. So as we look at a bulk capacity fee recommendation, as I said before, we propose to modify this to assess the fee by hydraulic zone. We know per our prior conversations, I think everyone is aware, that we do currently have limited capacity available for sale. Our water districts in some of the towns have some excess capacity. We want to avoid someone coming in and saying, "We wanna buy all the water you've got at the cheapest rate we can right now today." So what we would propose is as we continue to sell this capacity until we have new significant supply available, we would limit that sale to those who need the capacity, those who are, they could purchase at this interim rate if they don't have excess capacity available, or those who have a contract that requires us to sell it to them as they record plats. The other big factor in this that's necessary as we move forward with our bulk customers is we have to negotiate and implement new water supply agreements. And I've referenced this before, now is the time, as we're talking about new water supply sources and new water supply projects, that we can work with the towns to talk about, you know, what are these costs? What are means for you to supply capacity long-term, the amount that you need, and potential financing available for those towns, ways to finance the, that capacity if they want large upfront purchases in our new, in our new project. So when we take this and look at it per, break this down by proposed per fiscal year, you can see the very bottom row are the proposed rates over the next three fiscal years, if we do something similar to what I recommended on the system development fees, if we step towards that, that maximum amount we calculated. So you can see for fiscal year '25, '26, we would be looking at anywhere from $19.24 per gallon to $21.72 per gallon for the bulk customers, depending on what hydraulic zone they're located in. And again, I would like to do this very similar to the system development fee, I would come back next month with a recommendation based on any feedback I may receive today. Also, I apologize for this, but I think that for the bulk capacity fees, it would be fair to our bulk customers to implement those on November 1 as opposed to October 1. We've always been committed to giving them a 90-day period, and I have not been able to give them these projected numbers, so I would be sharing this information with them this week, and that would give them 90 days to have this information in hand. I apologize, it still says October 1 on the slide. So any question on bulk water before I go to bulk sewer?
I have one question. Is there any scenario whereby we calculate this fee and we charge it out, but at some point in the future, there's some development that reduces our cost to develop capacity? Are any refunds allowed onto this, this, this rule that we're going by?
I'm not aware of refunds for system development fees, but what we make sure to do is we continue to keep our analysis up to date, any project changes. And if we don't go to that highest number on day one, then we certainly have that ability as our CIP changes until we've actually built out our largest, you know, our large water supply project, if it were to change, you know, we can continue to change that in our capital improvements plan.
Okay, so once it's paid, then basically that's it. While it goes up and down after that, it, it really doesn't matter for that individual bulk customer.
I'm pretty sure the system development fee statute says they pay the rate, when they record the plat, that's the rate that they are to pay. So if it goes down in the future, that's just...
And, and one thing I wanna clarify, so a bulk customer comes in right now and say, and sees the increase that's gonna be in the future, if they came in and said, "Well, we need, we need another million, two million gallons of capacity," but they can't show that they need it or, or they already have excess capacity, then the answer will be no?
That's correct. And I would propose having some more details on the, when I come back next month, on the parameters on how we set those numbers. The, when we do our local water supply plans for the state, all of the water systems, the state looks at 80%. They want everyone to have, be sitting around 80%, you know, we don't, so you have some excess, but you're not over allocated. So 80% is sort of the, the goal with the state when they look at our local water supply plans.
And then, I know we looked at residential for, versus bulk. What do you consider bulk customer? Is it the towns? Is it industry? Is it both?
So our bulk customers are those other utilities that we have in our local agreements with. Those are utilities that we sell water to, and then they have their own retail customers that they sell the water or sewer to.
How do we characterize non-residential large users?
If it's a, our, our user, so non-residential, that's the, still a retail customer of the county with those system development fees that I displayed earlier, and it's based on meter size.
Meter size.
Meter size, or there is the little note at the bottom that says we do have the discretion to charge it based on cost per gallon if their size is really not indicative of the demand that they will put on our system. So for example, a church that might need a larger meter, and if they show they, they're not gonna have that, they're not gonna have the demand, and the cost per gallon for their estimated daily usage is less than that system development fee for that meter size, then we could apply that, that rate based on that cost per gallon.
Okay.
But many times, if you, if you look at what that type of user typically uses, that cost per gallon rate is not, it's not, it would not help them financially, they're better to pay the, the rate established. Now, we do have, and I'm, I said that, once we get over a certain size, I can't remember what that is, I think it's over three inch, we do say we look at the cost per gallon, yes, three inch and larger, we do assess a cost per gallon rate. So it's a large industry that needs an eight inch meter, we would look at that cost per gallon and go back to that cost per gallon at the bottom.
If you have a user that is, is a large volume user, but their meter is not allowing the flow rate that they need, they would not, they want a larger meter, but they're not using any more volume, then it's, the fees are still applicable for the larger meter?
We, we do not currently have an exception for that, no. Now, I would say if, if the larger meter were installed and the smaller meter were removed, we could give a credit for the system development fee associated with the smaller meter size. Because that larger size still has that higher potential demand on the system. It's the potential demand it can place on the system.
Flow rate demand?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So back to, I think that was the, that's the bulk water capacity fee. The sewer is a little easier, it's very similar to the one for water, I mean, for retail system development fees. All of the treatment projects apply for our bulk customers. The transmission projects, we did the same as we did on water. The transmission projects that are specific to our retail customers, such as those at 40, 42, you know, we've gotta transmit that wastewater from there back to our wastewater plant. We remove those projects from here. Those don't really affect Smithfield, Selma, Pine Level, Four Oaks, our core bulk sewer customers. So we, we, those are the ones that are zeroed out in blue. Then when we go back to that bulk capacity fee calculation, it's very similar to the system development fee calculation. The bulk capacity fee increases slightly per gallon, per gallon per day, and, and part of that is just because of the cost of the projects in the capital improvements plan. You know, those costs have changed, they've increased, inflation's been applied to those. So the current rate we charge for bulk customers is $10.68 per gallon per day, the proposed rate's $11.01 per gallon per day. And again, that's specific to these four core customers. If we had another bulk customer come in that's not in this same service area and it costs more for more transmission facilities to them, it would be a different rate we would propose, and it would be a specific agreement. It would not be the rate that's in the schedule, in our published schedule. Steps ahead. Steps ahead, we're considering, we're, the public hearing today. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I would like to come back in August with a recommendation based on any feedback that you have today. I would recommend the final rates for the system development fee and for the bulk capacity fees. Again, I would like to keep the effective date for system development fees is October 1 and November 1 for the bulk capacity fees. And I'll be happy to answer any more questions, and I know this is a public hearing, I may be overstepping the speak.
All right. Any other questions the board has for Ms. Farmer?
I've got one final question. We have a consultant that works with us to prepare this, and it has a professional engineer seal that, that goes on it. So basically, that is our, I guess assurances that the intent of the statute is being complied with here with these calculations. Is there any audit process that, that something is done on this to, to, I guess, as a checks and balances, ensure that it's, it's indeed compliant with the statute, is not overcharging, undercharging?
So the financial consultant that we've used for this has done, does quite a few of these in North Carolina. They're the ones, they're, they're the final check on this. We've, we have, I'm not aware of an audit process. We have consulted though with our outside counsel on several matters as we've gone through the process and had some questions on what's appropriate on, on some of these numbers. And we have consulted with them on certain pieces of that to make sure that we're in compliance with the statute. But I'm not aware of an outside audit process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah. So for our bulk water customers, especially as they become aware of all of this, do they, could they just contact your office for the next, until the next meeting, or how did that?
Yes, and I'm going to, after, in follow-up to this meeting, either this afternoon or tomorrow, I will be sending out complete information to the bulk customers based on this analysis, what I presented to you today, and how we calculated that, and let them know what we're proposing, what I have proposed, and give them any opportunity for feedback. I think they are aware, based on the last time we did this, they know, you know, we've increased, the, the last number has gone up, but I think all of our customers were aware that increases were coming, and they knew that we were going in this direction.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The, I should ask this early on perhaps, the methodology that we've chosen to use, what's the, what's the characteristics of that compared to the other methodologies? What's the pros and cons?
So the, the first one is based on all existing system capacity. We don't have enough system capacity for, for long-term. The, the second one, I think, was based on all new system capacity. Because we still have a little bit of system capacity available in our existing system, we chose to use the, the combined method because it looks at both available. It looks at your whole, system as a whole. So a customer's not coming in and buying capacity in the expansion we're doing right now today. They're buying capacity in our entire system to look at it over a 20-year period.
So the characteristics you nicked us drove that decision?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one comment, and I think just for the, for the people that are trying to get a handle on understanding all this, I think it's important to point out that these, these funds, and you'll hear, hear her, uh, rec, uh, refer to them as Fund 69 and Fund 67, these are, these water and sewer funds are like small businesses, we call them enterprise funds, and they have to generate their own revenue to be able to operate. So think of a small business that sells a product, you have to generate enough money to, to, to be able to provide that product, and the transmission lines, and the capacities, and all the things that have to, to come into play to be able to produce the water and process the sewer. So, you know, abhorrent taxes are not intermingled, that's very frowned upon by the local government commission, it has to be a standalone, so that the debt that's incurred by these utilities has to be self-sustaining. We have to generate enough fees to be able to satisfy, to service that debt, and provide the future capacity that's needed in the account. So just a little bit of a clarification to help people understand, because it, it is confusing, it's a lot of information, but you did a good job in presenting it. Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing I will point out, the system development fees are restricted on how we can use those. We can only use them for these capacity building projects or debt service related to those projects.
All right, I did have, if you would do the same thing for the bulk things, the revenue?
Cost differences, yes.
The cost difference. And, and then the other on the, I guess, in, in the methodology, what was the construction timeframe for the Lower Neuse Water Treatment Facility?
We currently have that in our capital improvements plan coming online in 2033.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now I'll call on anyone else that wishes to comment to come forward and state their name and your town or township that you're from. And I know we've had Mr. Rowe come and speak to us already via email, so I'll, I'll let you come first.
Yeah.
And again, your name, town, or township?
Good morning, my name is Eddie Rowe, I'm from Princeton, Boone Hill Township. So I come today because I actually had a water problem about three weeks ago. I have 6,000 pigs. So about three weeks ago, I have five wells on my farm. My wells are running dry, I mean, 30-gallon a minute wells pumping four gallons a minute, five gallons a minute, so most of my wells are anywhere from 350 to 400 foot deep. So can't really, can't really tell where the water went, you know. My, my first initial thought was the rock quarry, is, you know, the rock quarry is a huge hole, you know, felt like my water's going there. So what I did back in 20 years ago, I bought a water tap for, for, for insurance. So luckily I had that tap. So about three weeks ago, whenever we got to be 100 degrees outside, my pigs started running out of water. So I was like, "Oh my God, you know, what do I do?" So then called Ms. Farmer's office, and she told me, we had a conversation with her, she pretty much told me I could, you know, I could hook onto the fire hydrant, and that's what we did. So luckily, you know, there was a fire hydrant close by, so we, we ran the fire hydrant for, for one day. But that really wasn't, really, really didn't help me because I've got a one-inch tap. So my one-inch tap right now, I'm, last month I used 500,000, 507,000 gallons of water running through a one-inch tap. So what I need is, I just need a two-inch tap, because I don't really need more total volume over the year, because pigs normally, pigs don't sweat, so they have to drink a lot of water. So 100% of my water is for water, is for pigs drinking. There's no, there's no, no mist, no fogger system, no mist system, no wash-down houses. Basically, 100% of this water that I'm using from the county is for, for pigs to drink water because they're hot. And, and the month of June, July, and August is whenever we really need the capacity of water. So what I'm, what I was wanting to do was just go get a, just increase my tap to a two-inch tap. Called Ms. Farmer's office, talked to her and Mr. Wells, super nice guy. He was very, you know, just walked me through it, talked to me through the steps, you know, maybe going with two, two, two one-inch taps, you know? So I was thinking about all that stuff. So what I did was I buried a three-inch water line from the road to my hog farm, which is 1,500 feet, because the system development fee is happening to be what I'm complaining about here today, is $38,000. So whenever I wanted to go from a one-inch tap to a two-inch tap, the only thing that I'm really complaining about or upset about is that $38,000 system development fee. Because I read this, you know, this 41-page document online, you know, 41 pages counting all the, all the exhibits, and everything I read says new, new this, new that, new this, new construction, like, like Ms. Farmer said, growth paying for growth. Well, I'm not growing, I'm already here. I mean, I've been here 20 years on this one farm, this one pig farm. So I feel like that there's got to be some kind of grandfather clause, gray area. I feel like that maybe the county commissioners could give Ms. Farmer the ability to, to waive a fee, or maybe come up with an agricultural exemption fee? Because, you know, I just, right now, I just don't have the $38,000 I need to, to, I feel like I shouldn't have to pay that $38,000, because I'm really just wanting to upsize my tap to a two-inch versus a one-inch. So, you know, I did, I went through the right steps, I went and talked to her, talked to Mr. Wells, really couldn't figure out what I was going to do, so I came to you guys, or to you and girls, this board, to try to figure out where, where my next step's going to be. Because like right now, we're, we're still tankering water. So I have a tanker truck that goes there every day with, with, with six, with 6,000 gallons of water. So right now, we're running a one-inch tap, plus I have a tanker that goes every day when it's really hot, to make sure my pigs have enough water. So this is a situation that I really need to get resolved, you know, as quickly as I can. So I guess my, you know, me speaking publicly for this system development fee, it, it's twofold for me, you know? So part of it, I want to talk about the system development fee, but really, I'm here just to solve my problem of my pigs not, you know, not having enough water. So, you know, I, I would hope that the board could, could give Ms. Farmer the ability to waive a fee, but, you know, I'm not sure, not sure if they can.
All right. Any, any questions?
Yes. So your issue is, is a volume issue that you can get through at a given time, but you're not using any more water than you typically use over the year?
No, so 1997, the state of North Carolina created a moratorium. We can't build any more hog farms. I can't expand my farm, my, my farm has zero, cannot legally, structurally be expanded, none, I mean, since, since 1997.
A question I asked Ms. Farmer earlier was along the same lines, I asked about change of tap size, but your volume doesn't change. I saw the same thing you did, that says these are new customers, applies to new customers. Well, it comes back to how you define a new customer. And if there is a increase in tap size, that is considered a new service. It seems, I asked her, what is the new system, what is the capacity cost associated with that? Because you say on face value, you really don't have any, well, you got transmission cost. And that was her response was, you know, you're not necessarily paying for bulk capacity in the plant, but your, your, your transmission cost or your distribution system is part of that calculation. So there is a, an impact to the system there. Now, will not it's, it's the amount listed here based because it's more narrowly focused? I don't know. And I don't know the answer to your question about will or not that authority could be dedicated to, to Ms. Farmer. I think that's more of a legal question.
So February I used 295,000. So this, Ms. Farmer told me, through the email, that the average county two-inch tap user uses roughly 50,000 gallons a month, for the average county user, non-residential. February I used 295,000 gallons. March I used 375, April 430,000, May 397,000, June 509,000. I guarantee you, month of July, it's going to be 700,000 gallons, all through a one-inch tap. So I just need to go to a two-inch to push the volume through. So what a water and sewer guy told me was, you can run two, and Ms. Farmer can, I can tell me, you can run two houses on a one-inch tap, you can run 20 houses on a two-inch tap. There's that much volume difference in, in like pushing the water. So my farm is 1,500 feet off the road. So I just need that two-inch tap just to push the water further, you know, get it there quicker. I, I buried a two, I buried a, a three-inch line now, and I just ordered a four-inch line. We're getting to put in another, another line, we're going to put in two, two different lines there. So I'm going, I've spent the money to put the water to my farm, but I just feel like I just wanted to go with a two-inch tap to get me that much water.
Have you put the three-inch line into service yet?
Have you?
Did that make a difference?
Oh my God, it really, that, that really helped out a lot. But it still hasn't, it tremendously helped the most of anything I've done, but it just didn't get, it still hasn't got me where I need to be. So that two-inch tap is where I really need to be.
Well, I, from my perspective, and I'm, I'm an engineer, and I can understand what you're saying, but I'm seeing here a situation, you're not really using any more volume than you have been using, but you've reached, you've got a pinch point in your system based upon the meter size that was installed in good faith, and it was adequate for a number of years based upon your, your salt that I want for your wells.
Right.
With the wells now having gone away or not producing, then you've got, you need to get an equivalent amount of water through that you've been using.
Oh, yeah.
To mitigate, you, you've got to mitigate the peak. It would seem that, that I think there should be some sort of allowance for that situation for a, an agricultural operation, but that's just my opinion. As I said, gets back about in terms of what we can do as, as a governmental agency, is more of a legal question relative to the statutes that have been enacted, and I'll have to defer to others on that. I think we need to at least consider that, that point of view.
Because the system development fee, like now, I'm, I'm, I don't have the 38,000 to pay for it. Well, once y'all vote on this, you know, the new, new bill, my, what I have on my paper from this, was it, it was going to go to 65,000. So I can't afford 38, and I surely can't afford 68, or 60, 65, if it goes at that in, in two months from now. So that's why I really need to get this resolved somehow in the next, next 30 days.
If you went to the two-inch tap, are you going to keep the one-inch tap also?
Well, I know Ms. Farmer was saying that I would get a credit for that.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, so no, I would just use one tap.
Okay, so you'd get a credit if, I don't know what that amount is.
But I didn't read, so nowhere, and nowhere in any of these documents I've gotten from the county have I read that statute where it says, so the, the part about getting a credit by ups, so nowhere have read where a customer can upsize. Like where's the, where is the documentation to, that allows a customer to upsize the tap? Because there's nowhere in this documentation I've seen any of that. Like is there, is there a, is there a SOP for, for upsizing? Is it like, is that something that people just don't really do? Or, because I really just want to upsize, I don't really want a new tap.
Well, it seems to me it's considered a new service under this policy.
But why, but why is it considered a new service? If you're, if, if you've got a 20-year-old tap, you've had for 20 years since 2005, and I just want to upsize it, then why do I have to be considered a new customer if I'm just upsizeing the tap?
That gets back to my question I posed earlier to Ms. Farmer when she's up here, and she said, "There is a cost impact to the system, it's basically transmission cost that it was allocated to someone else, and now it's being allocated to a Pacific customer because you've got to move that volume through in a given amount of time." Your issue is flow rate, you can't get through this pinch point where the meter's at, at the volume you need to meet your peak demand.
And my peak demand's only three months out of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And honestly, like if, my farm can't sustainably run on county water. My water, man, my water bill was 22, 23 hundred dollars. This month is probably going to be, by me using 700,000, my water bill's going to be $3,500. So sustainably, I can't do that 12 months out of the year. But I keep my, but, but I'm the voice for my pigs, because they can't speak, they just don't have water.
Right.
So I, I have the obligation to figure out what I can do moving forward to get these pigs water for the next two months until the hot weather's over with. That's why we're tankering water now, plus the fire hydrant on, as a, as a insurance policy. But the three-inch water line we put down, that has tremendously helped out a lot. But it still hasn't got me where I have to be. So...
My question is, if, if the one-inch provides 500,000 or more per month, what, what would you see you'd be using if you put a two-inch in, how much more water?
So what we're doing now, so the way, the way this water system works for me is I have a 10,000-gallon holding tank. So I'm pumping this water into the holding tank. Well, this holding tank has a centrifugal pump at the bottom. That centrifugal pump comes on and powers my system. It, it feeds all eight buildings, all 6,000 pigs. So, so right now, I'm just, I, I'm putting the infrastructure in so I can just turn the county water on with a RPZ at the road, and just, it just going to, it's just going to feed my whole farm. Where now, I'm doing it any other, any kind of way I can, I'm doing it the farmer way, just to, just to get by. But the way I'm doing it is just not, the way I'm doing it's not sustainable, but it's working. So, so what I, I need, with a two-inch tap and a four-inch line running 1,500 feet, it can, it can, it can service my whole farm by me just turning the valve on versus the way I'm doing it now.
Previously, did your wells feed into your storage tank?
Yeah, no, no, both. So I had five wells. Three of them were on, in, in, online in the system, two of them fed my tank. The last two we dug just fed the tank because of where we put them out. So the last two we dug were at the highway. So my two, two wells are 1,500 foot from my hog farm, my hog farm also. Three wells are built, dug at my farm, they feed my system, two wells feed my tank.
I guess my question still though would be like, if, if you're using five, six, 700,000 now during peak times, what do you think that number would go to with the, with that number increase with the two-inch line?
No, I think, I think that 700,000 gallons is probably going to be the, I mean, we've never, I haven't seen it this hot, and I mean, I haven't seen, yesterday was 103 degrees on my farm. It's just that I, I haven't used as much water ever, because it's just been, seemed like it's been a very hot July.
Yeah, it's been the most humid in like 20, 30 years.
So, like I said, these pigs are, these pigs don't sweat, they just drink water. And it's crazy that I'm spending, I'm using 500,000 or 600,000 gallons of, just drinking water for pigs. But it's part of farming, it's part of agriculture, you know, it's part of my farm, and it's what, what we have to do. But I just, I just feel like that we need to come up with some kind of, some kind of agriculture rate. A lot of counties have it, Duplin County, if you Google Duplin County water, you'll see it, Duplin County has it, Sampson County has it, a lot of counties have agriculture rates. And, and you know, I'm not really complaining about the rate per water, I'm just complaining about the 38,000. about the 38,000. You know, if I would have had $38,000 three weeks ago, wrote Ms. Farmer a check, I'd have water today. But I didn't have, I don't have, I didn't have the 38,000 three weeks ago, and I still don't have it today. So.
I understand what Ms. Farmer's saying about the impact it has on, the, the potential impact it has on the system. But it seems to me there ought to be some way to accommodate this unique situation.
Yeah, and I would just say that, and I'm looking at Ms. Farmer and also Ms. Slusser, is that something we can take a look at as, as that policy on agriculture and take a look at what the other ones have? I know that seems like a Pandora's box if you have that up, if you're talking one farm with 700,000 gallons and we have a limited quantity of water available, but at least take a look at that. And I think maybe August 4th is a quick ask on that, but do what we can to, if we can, if we can do that by then, that would be great. But I think we need to take a look at that to, to help remedy Mr. Rose's situation.
Do I need to, should I just seek legal counsel? So like if you're saying this is a legal thing, should I?
We, we can get up here and say whatever we want to, and it may not have a legal leg to stand on. So we just want to make sure we're doing what's legal on our end and so directing staff to, to do as good as we can do. I don't think we, we could pass something right now and it not be legal and come back.
You have brought up a potential precedent here. If other counties are, are doing this, have this allowance, then they have some legal precedent in which to do that because they're subject to the same rules we are. But there may be a process we'd have to go through to amend the, our water.
Yeah, it's our policy, yeah.
A policy, yes.
So is every, isn't every policy able to be waived? Have you ever seen a policy that couldn't be waived or, or like grandfathered in? Or is there, isn't every, I mean, every, every policy is not, is every policy wrote just to be, that's it?
So I, so I will defer to our attorney on that one.
Good morning, Board. So policies really, they can be amended, but I would never recommend waiver of a policy because in the Constitution, we're prohibited from doing what's called exclusive amolments, which is basically benefiting one individual without looking at a whole group of individuals. And so it would be my recommendation that we not do a waiver. However, we can certainly, as the chairman has asked, look at other policies and see how those policies are drafted and how they work for a category of persons for perhaps an amendment. But I don't want to make a commitment that we can do that today. I would like to look at that issue to see if that's something that would be available for us.
I think our best answer is let us study it and, and see what we can do if there's something that's doable. Keeping in mind that, that whatever the outcome is, that's a resource that somebody's got to pay for. And so how, how we allocate that out is, is, you know, neither here nor there, but it's got to be done legally, you know? We can't do something that's going to create a hardship for somebody else or something that's not legal and will be overturned. So I think, I think us proceeding cautiously and letting the legal folks look at it, see what it is, study the other counties that are, that are already doing that. I think Mr. Stovall brings up a good point. Obviously, they've found some type of way of doing it, but we just, we just need to look at it. I mean, this is kind of the first we've heard of it.
So anywhere in your documents, do you have saying that when you, whenever you upsize, then do you have any documentation on your?
Mr. Rose, if you would speak to them.
Is there, is there any documentation that, that shows that when you upsize, you're, you're considered a new customer?
I don't know what it, oh, Ms. Farmer, do you want to address that?
Sure. So we don't have anything?
I asked you the same thing, come.
Each tap is considered a new tap. So it is a new tap. Then the question is, are we replacing one or not? And that's where I, you know, said, okay, we're taking one tap out, we're replacing it. That's a possibility to, to analyze. But each tap is considered a new tap, a new service there. We're putting a new service in for you. We don't address, you know, upsizing in our policies.
So in our policy, that could be something we consider then. In, in most jurisdictions, it's.
Right, because a new tap has to be made on the water main. We have to go physically install a new two-inch tap on that main.
But you would credit back the existing tap toward that?
That is what I have proposed.
Yes, okay.
Because that usage goes away. We've abandoned one tap, that usage.
I just, I just want to emphasize that. I know we've got to study this and make sure we do something that is legally defensible, but we have heard from this, this gentleman here that time is of essence in terms of meeting his needs. So we need to keep that at the forefront of what we do here.
Yeah, correct.
I agree.
Can't wait till October.
That's what, that's what I'm just trying to figure out. Should I just, what, what's my next step? Do I do, do I just wait till the next county commissioner's meeting?
I would, I would say if you want to check in, send an email next week and say, see where we are. And I think that would probably be the, the best I could, I could say is check and see where we are and keep doing that.
Got you. Okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. And I would say, I believe that the Johnson County Soil and Water Conservation folks, there's a well cost sharing program. If you want to reach out to Greg Walker on that as well, I, I don't know what that's worth or what's involved in that, but if you would make that call to Greg, I think that may be helpful. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Then any questions, comments by the commissioners?
No, sure.
I know it's a lot of information as always to digest and, and understand, and I thank Ms. Farmer and Mr. Rineer for, and the staff for their efforts in working through this and our consultants as well. And the board will continue to think on this, and we would place this as an item on our August the 4th agenda at this point.
Yeah, I would just think, I would just be interested to see how Duplin, Sampson, Wayne, all of those surrounding counties have as their agriculture rates and how they have their processes. Because like I said, there's a lot of hogs in those counties too. They're drinking a lot of water. So I'd be very interested to see how their county setup is to help give a good similar situation to how we are now. And then that way, if we're going with the president to, to be able to, not just hog farms, but if there's chicken houses or turkey houses or anything like that, to be able to have an ag focus or an ag rate, I think that'd be really beneficial.
I agree. All right, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the next item. And just a reminder that we have postponed the Buffalo Road parallel of Forest Main discussion until our August 4th, the meeting at 10 o'clock. And next up, we have Kim Rineer, our engineering manager, to present resolutions to close out American Rescue Plan projects. So Ms. Rineer, welcome. To you this morning.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning to the ladies and gentlemen on the commission. I'm Kim Rineer with Johnson County Public Utilities, here to talk to you about our asset management program. Just a brief presentation before we hit the resolutions as required. Johnson County has a lot of public utility assets. I won't go through the full list. That's going to make it to the screen. That's a lot of miles of water and sewer lines. If you got in your car in Benson on I-40, you can make it to the California line before you ran out of our, our water and sewer lines. And then there's thousands of valves, hydrants, manholes, dozens of elevated storage tanks, pump stations, two wastewater treatment plants, a water treatment plant and a reclaimed water system. So we have a lot to manage. While we're managing that, we are serving almost 50,000 water and sewer customers as residents and business. We also have bulk customers, as Shandra went over just, just recently, including primary supplies to the towns of Clayton, Four Oaks, Kenley and Princeton. We deliver an average of 16.1 million gallons of water daily. On the sewer side, we have approximately 10,000 residents and businesses served. We also have bulk customers there, including primary treatment for the towns of Smithfield, Selma, Four Oaks and Pine Level. An average of 6.85 million gallons of sewer is treated daily by our system. Which brings us to the importance of asset management. First of all, we not only have to work harder to meet the growing demands of our system, we have to work smarter. We have to be efficient. We have to be able to get a work order from a manager's desk to the guy, the field technician's phone in a matter of minutes. We have to be able to track all our maintenance for all those assets and put them on a regular schedule in a system that will remind everybody to do the necessary work to keep the system operating. That brings us to accountability. Each and every asset has a maintenance schedule and it's assigned to a technician, and we can check if it's getting done. If a customer calls with a complaint or notices a break in our system, we know who it was assigned to and how quickly they got out there. We take all that information that we gather in, through our daily operations and the use of the system, and we program it into our planning. We can look at staff levels, we can look at our annual budget for operations and maintenance, and we can put our big projects into our capital improvement plan. An asset management program first requires an inventory. Believe it or not, we started on this asset management journey way back in 1998. That's when we started mapping our water and sewer system in the GIS. Today, we have a full-time staff, Sherri Edwards, who maintains our GIS layer, working with the GIS department here, just to keep it up to date. But by 2020, we decided we needed to do more. We needed to start collecting all the data of our daily operations so we can roll it into a true asset management program. We investigated different software packages and selected CityWorks, and we worked with, we selected a consultant, HDR, to help us get started. They built upon that GIS system, added data to it and rolled it into the system so we can now look at our assets, see how much maintenance they require, look at the condition they're at, and use that for real-world decisioning. Once we completed the, the massive effort to get the collection and distribution system into there, we decided we needed to get our existing wastewater plant and our existing water plant added to the system. A North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure was offering grants for this kind of work. So we applied for and successfully received grants to add each of those facilities into our CityWorks program. With these two facilities, we had to work a little harder. The inventory wasn't quite as robust in GIS. We had to add that first and then add all the maintenance for all the items in the plants. So that's a whole different level of, of work to, to get that up and running. But we did, we got it up and running. At the end of last year, we've been successfully using it, and right now, we're just making tweaks as we get suggestions from staff. And currently, we're adding our 210 wastewater treatment facility that began operation last summer. We got all the information about what, the record drawings and all the manuals, and then began adding that to our system with hopefully to launch it before the end of the year. That's been our journey so far. The outcome is that we have dedicated staff maintaining this data, not just Sherri Edwards. There's 60 other users of the system keeping this up to date. We've been able to efficiently manage our work orders. We've logged over 2,800 so far, just that momentum building until it's fully implemented. And we're, we're able to generate some really wonderful reports about the state of our system and what we're going to need to keep it running and how to plug that into, like I said, staffing, operation maintenance decisions and budgeting. So with all that said, we hope that you will take the action to resolve, to close out those two grant programs and fully implement these programs.
All right, any questions for Ms. Rineer?
I have one question, and I'm very pleased to see that, that you folks have gone down this direction. I think this is critical for infrastructure management. In terms of work orders being generated, usually there's two sources. You've got schedules that the system is generating based upon what you put in there, then you've got reactive work orders from staff as things occur. Do you have any, any sense of what the percentage breakdown of these two different types are?
I don't today, but the system allows me to get that information for you, which is something new for us, and, and I'm excited about moving forward to be able to manage our system as efficiently as possible.
Well, in theory, as you get the system fully running and functional, then the amount that are being generated by the system will eventually, should eventually exceed those that are reactive. And reactive would come down, but, but that's, that's, that's what every facility manager looks for in, in their system, so.
That's our goal, absolutely, is to, to see reactive go down and, and regular maintenance and replacement go up so we have less disruption to service for all those customers.
And less cost on equipment repairs and replacement.
Exactly, exactly. When you can plan it out in advance, you have time to shop, you have time to have maintenance contracts, you're not under the gun to get it done right then at any cost possible.
Right, right. All right, anyone else? And I would just concur with that. I know that we've seen our Johnson County Public School System initiated a program. We're getting ready to initiate one for all our other facilities that are not under utilities. And I agree with Commissioner Stovall, it is much better to have a handle on that and plan and manage things ahead of time rather than be reactive and, and spend a lot of money fixing things when, when they fail. So kudos for y'all for, for making that step, and, and we'll, we'll get there with the rest of facilities sometime soon. And I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolutions to close out both projects.
I second that. Oh, go ahead.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those, or any other discussion rather, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
All right. Next up, we have, we've already taken care of the Johnson County Boys and Girls Club. Ms. Gonzalez did a very nice job presenting to us this morning. We'll move on to Steve Strickland, I believe is going to step up, the Assistant Health Director for our Health Department, and present a resolution to direct expenditure, expenditure of opioid settlement funds. So, Mr. Strickland, it's yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Good morning.
Keith Ramens here. Steve, from the Johnson County Health Department, we're here to explain to you a resolution whereby the state requires us to spell out how we're going to utilize, if we sell those funds every fiscal year. The funds that we're talking about here is in the amount of $1,382,248. That money was budgeted with the regular budget process that you adopted back in, in 25, 26 fiscal year. Strategies that we have in this current year is the same as last year, a few tweaks in terms of developments. First strategy was collaborative strategic planning, and that's whereby the Health Department, along with one full-time coordinator and a part-time coordinator that we would soon hire, will direct this, all the strategies of this money. And let me just say that there are many kinds of costs to stay that did not go with the Public Health Department to coordinate the opioid strategy in terms of use of funds, but, but we did here in Johnson, and I applaud you for that because I think we've been doing this work for many years prior to the money coming down. And so we've got a task force of individuals in organizations of over 100. So that, that speaks for itself, and that we meet quarterly to discuss what we're doing and how effective in terms of our plans are, are working. So that's the first strategy. Strategy number two, evidence-based addiction treatment, MAT medication assistance treatment. We're working with Commonwealth Health, our, our own behavioral health clinic and the Health Department to work with folks to get medication-assisted treatment there. That's in the amount of 139,380. Strategy number three, recovery support services. This is where we're hiring peer support specialists, folks who have gone through the addiction process themselves and recovered, working with people, our clients we're working with here, and these strategies to help get them the resources needed to get them recovered treating things that nature. That's in the amount of $92,811. Strategy number four, NOxon Distribution. Really, this is a training program. We're teaching folks throughout the county, organizations, police departments, whoever how to use NOxon. You can buy it, but you've got to know how to use it. That's $3,000 for using it to do training for NOxon.
Excuse me, Steve, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
With your indulgence, Mr. Chairman. That third strategy, talking about peer, hiring peer and training.
Yes.
Is there a particular outlet or play? I know we've got several agencies in the, in the county that help rehabilitate folks involved in that. Are there some outlets that you use to, to find these prospects and training?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Our peer support specialists who've gone through this know these outlets.
I got you.
And they're working with us. And our coordinators are working with them to ensure that we're giving the folks to these treatment places.
Good. I know we've got several privately.
We have that here in the county.
Good.
But if we need to refer outside of the county, we can do that too. And we can transport these folks.
Sorry for interruption.
No, no problem. Fifth strategy was early intervention. That's where this past year, we did an RFP process. We have $450,000 to put out there for RFPs. And we awarded to grantees, Johnston County School System and the Post Center in our Wake County. Johnston County School System, their process will start August 1st. They'll get $100,000 this year to hire an intervention coordinator to work with at-risk kids throughout the entire school system. And then the Post Center is going to do lots of education throughout the county during the course of year to teach folks on the addiction process, how to recover, things that nature. That itself was $200,000, $100,000 for each entity. Strategy number six, Noxon distribution. I talked about the training for Noxon. We've got $132,000 to buy Noxon. This past year, school system reached out and we assured that they had Noxon every single school in terms of what they needed, all the police departments, sheriff, any organization we can connect with to get Noxon available, fire departments. Folks now know where to go to get this stuff. You can walk into the Health Department any given day, but we're going to teach you before you leave how to use it. $132,000 there. The last strategy, post overdose response team, we're very proud of what's happened here. We've got four community paramedics that work 24/7 to respond to opioid overdoses. And this has been very effective over the last year. We've encountered lots of folks that we've helped. We not just respond, we connect these folks with our peer support counselors or to treatment and then transport these people where they need to go to recover. We are also considering additional 14 in the future because of the successes of this one team. Questions you may have?
Any questions for Mr. Strickland?
I do, Ms. Chairman. Sustainability of these strategies. When these funds run out, any particular plans? I guess you can gauge what was effective and what hadn't been so effective.
We anticipate at this point in time, we've got enough funds to carry us 18 years plus at this point in time.
Correct.
So I think.
So it is sustainable.
Yes, sir. The money will be there, and I assure you it's going to be used wisely.
Ms. Chairman, I just have a comment. I want to commend Mr. Strickland and the folks at the Health Department for administering this program. They've really done an extraordinary job with it, and it's making a difference in the lives of people. And so thank you for your leadership on that and for.
Indeed.
And please note that if anything does change with these strategies of the money, we have to come back to you again to get this approved and certainly the public knows what we're doing.
Anyone else?
And Mr. Strickland can make money last.
Yes, he can. Yes, he can. All right.
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I got one comment. I think Johnston County's been cited over the recent years for a lot of positive things by our peer counties throughout the state, and I think this is one area in the public health department.
Absolutely.
Pierce and I, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have our 911 Director Morgan Harris here to make a request to move funds.
Good morning, good morning. Purpose today is to seek approval to move funds from our emergency telephone system fund, Balance, move it over to our operating budget to cover two items. One is an automated voice dispatch that we would like to go to that will coincide with our current pager project that we are finishing up right now, and also an increase that is passed down from our Harris vendor, Harris Radio System vendor, no relation.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, yeah.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Harris? I just say, well, you got those folks standing with you, want to make an introduction?
This is my deputy director, Zach Alexander, and my operations manager, Tina Parker.
All right. All right. Any questions? I hear a motion to approve.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the funds, the amount of $408,000 for the emergency telephone system fund.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Ms. Chairman, I do have a comment to make on the, they're doing a lot of things that are way outside what the norm is with the new 800 megahertz paging system, which I'm hearing. Couple of struggles, but majority of it's really good. But you're plowing so much new ground, so good job in doing that. And thank y'all for your teamwork and putting that stuff together. And we're, Johnston County 911 is one of the greatest in the nation, so actually in the world. I think you've got some world-renowned recognition there. And that is seriously world recognition. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I can't remember where we were. Did we make a motion in the second?
We did.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right. There you go. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I forget for looking ahead, but not among the, where we were. All right. Next up, we have Kathleen Lane here to present the Child Fatality Prevention Team's annual report.
Yes. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thanks for letting me come and do this. Y'all know why, what we do, why we do it. We've been doing it for years. We're trying to improve the system as much as we can. One of the couple of things that I just wanted to go over is the fact that coming up in January, there are going to be huge, huge changes to the system as we know it. North Carolina is going to be entering all of our child fatality data into the national database, which we have not done before. This is the first time we're going to be doing this. It's very, very complicated. It's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a little bit more effort from everybody on our team. We've got a great team. Everybody's very diligent. You know, they help us out, they do what they're supposed to do, they show up for meetings, they have great input. So with that being said, I just wanted to let you know that every year, we review the child fatality cases from the prior year. It takes approximately a year from the date of death to get all the information we need so, in order to present the cases. So in 2024, we reviewed a total of 24 child deaths that occurred in 2023. Okay? So we had two drownings, two motor vehicle accidents, eight premature slash perinatal conditions, two birth defects, six illnesses, one homicide, and three unsafe sleep environments. Some of these deaths occur regularly, like we can't seem to just get away from the safe sleep environment scenarios, no matter how hard we try. A lot of it is related to cultural and familiar habits that, you know, are kind of hard to break. But, you know, we're very devoted to trying to get those numbers down. The other thing that we have done and has been very successful was we've developed a crisis referral form that EMS has, the medical examiners have, social workers have, that when you go out to a child death and there's other children in the home, or, you know, a great deal of generational things, aunts, uncles, grandparents, parents, you know, EMS shows up, police show up, medical examiner shows up, child is removed from the scene, okay, what do we do now? Okay, where do we go? Who do we talk to? So we developed this child referral form, and it's a listing of support agencies that are available to these families to help them deal with the crisis of a child tragedy. So I have a couple of copies if y'all would like to have some, I can leave them with you.
This is a deputy clerk, please. Thank you.
And it's been pretty successful so far, so that we're able to get in contact with these families and offer them the help that they need and kind of intercede for them because we don't want to have another scenario where nobody helps and then they've got another child fatality that happens a couple of years later. We've had that happen. So we go to all the festivals, all the events, you know, we have a little booth there, we hand out all of our information. We have two of our members who are working with the GIS to determine flood-prone areas in Johnston County and hopefully improve the signage there, which, you know, when these big, huge storms come along and the flooding occurs, you know, some people just are not aware. So we're going to work with the Department of Transportation to hopefully get that done. And we also work with different agencies to promote gun safety, education, and resources where families can get the lock boxes and the gun locks. So I just want to say thank you to the county commissioners and the Johnston County Board of Health for the opportunity to share this information with you because both of you are very instrumental in what we do. So thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Lane?
I have a question.
Yeah.
For your records, what do you define a child? What is a child?
A child under, is a person under the age of 18.
18, okay.
Yeah. Our cutoff is 18.
All right. Any other questions?
No, sir. Miss, a comment. Kathleen, thank you for all your work on this. You've been doing this for a long time, and we appreciate your input and involvement. And that's the second time I've heard your presentation because I heard with the Board of Health also. It gets better every time.
I wish.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Yes, thank you. All right. The next item is Johnston County ABC Board travel policy request. There we go. All right. Listen, we have Shannon Capps here, also with a couple of board members and former commissioners, Jeff Carver and Lee Jackson, so welcome, gentlemen.
Morning.
Ms. Capps.
Good afternoon. Good morning. I have a coffee. Would y'all like it?
No, if you would, I think we have a copy in our, in our agenda.
And my contact information.
Okay, yeah, if you'll get that. Thank you.
But we're asking for permission to, if our travel policy conforms to yours, that we can use it in our employment.
Okay.
And that's all we need.
Is there any specific reason for that?
The commission asked us to do that. They request that we get permission to use it.
Okay.
And we have to have it.
For some reason, that comes to us, I think, is that correct? Madam Counselor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, I would say typically, we don't vote on things at the meeting we're here them at, so I would suggest to the board, I'm open to other ideas, but that we take action on this at our August 4th meeting at 10:00.
Do y'all have a deadline imposed by the commission or anything?
They want it as soon as we can get it back to them because I didn't realize that we had to have permission to use it because, but we do have a form that they want us to have signed, and then we have to return it. Can I just leave that with y'all?
Yep. If you would leave it with the deputy clerk.
Ms. Chairman, I understand the importance of precedence and maybe some not crossing some, but we've all been aware of this before today's meeting, so I don't know why, unless we've got some heartburn on approving it.
I just think our, we can, I hate to say after this morning, but we can make exceptions to our policy if the board so chooses. So that's the pleasure of the board. I'm fine with that as well. I just know that's our current policy.
I think they probably need to move along with it, and it's not something that's unusual or strange in that it's just adapting to our already existing county policy.
I think they've done it through the years for a long time, so.
And these guys left their employment to come down here and lobby for it, I guess.
We understand concurrence on that, but.
Yeah, so what is the staff? Did you take a look at that, Counselor?
Yes, sir, we did. And specifically, what's interesting about this, so if the Board of Commissioners did not approve this policy, then the ABC Board operates under the state policy. The one thing in the statute that everybody needs to keep in mind is that if the Board of Commissioners does approve this policy and the policy, I have reviewed what was requested, and it does comport with the county's policy. Just keep in mind, though, that if there is ever a dispute between the ABC Board as to what is acceptable to approve under the travel policy, it's the county finance officer that makes that determination, which puts the county finance officer in an interesting position. But certainly, I would hope that the Board of Commissioners would support the county finance officer's decision.
Would it help, Counsel, if we, do we have to call it the same as the county or parallel, you know, the same as, but not the county policy? Does that make sense?
It would be the ABC's Board's travel policy. It would not be the county's travel policy. It would be their, their policy is just the same as ours. It matches. It mirrors it.
I guess I question then, why would our finance officer have to do with their?
Because the statute says so.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I would just make one final comment, and we'll see where it goes after that. But I don't know that the sense of urgency, this was passed by the ABC Board on, in February 20, end of February, so I don't know that two weeks, rather than make exception to our policy, I would like to continue with our policy unless, you know, we can put it on the consent agenda if that's what we decide in a couple of weeks. But I would, I would like to stick to our policy.
I agree.
Agree.
Now, that's three agrees. Okay.
I concur.
All right. So we will, this will likely be on the consent agenda on August 4th. I don't think it will require attendance, but we will keep Ms. Capps informed as to where we're headed with that.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you. Welcome. This is the first time you've been here, so good to, good to see you here. And gentlemen, always good to see you. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Efficiency of government.
Yeah.
That's what's wrong with government.
All right. Next up, I saw Todd somewhere.
Todd has had.
Oh, so he had to leave, so we have a guest presenter on the County Committee for America 250 NC. And I will say that I will own up to not having the best memory. I was sitting at an NCA function last month, and they brought this up. I immediately text Todd and said, why hadn't I heard about this? And he said, we approved the resolution in '24. And actually, one of the first two counties to do it, Johnston County and Mecklenburg, were the first two to adopt it. So I thanked him for reminding me of that. So I will turn it over to you to get me out of telling stories on myself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Allison Elsie, and I am the chairman or chairwoman, chairperson of the Johnston County, the official America 250 Committee for Johnston County. Todd is the vice chair. And back on February 4th of 2024, your body did enact this resolution, whereas Roy Cooper, Governor of North Carolina, created an America 250 to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States and North Carolina's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas America 250 NC has a mission to engage all North Carolinians and all 100 counties through their many signatures and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the commemoration by inspiring future leaders and celebrating North Carolina's contribution to the nation over the last 250 years. And whereas by adoption of North Carolina, America 250 North Carolina's mission, the Johnston County Committee is officially formed to achieve the goals of America 250 NC, and its members shall be appointed by the Johnston County Heritage Commission. So you guys voted on that back in February 20, February 5th of 2024. And we appreciate that so much. The, the whole point of the observance, there are two basic themes which have come to us through the North Carolina Count, Office of Cultural and Natural Resources.
Resources.
I think I've got that right.
Yeah.
That's a mouthful.
It's a long name.
Thank you. The two primary themes are revolutionary North Carolina and when we are us, which acknowledges our differences but also celebrates our shared heritage. The Johnston County Heritage Commission was given oversight of the committee and appointed me as the chair and Todd Johnson as the vice chair. And Todd apologizes because he did have to go to a funeral in which he's playing the music, and there's some rehearsal involved in that. in that. So he, we were going to divide this presentation. So like I say, thanks for bearing with me. Since the county commissioners resolved to have a committee and named me and Todd as the chairs of that committee, we have now 32 citizens from all over the communities throughout the county who bring various strengths and skills and special, specialties to be on our committee for this celebration. And we've had, our first meeting was in June of 2024, which we held at the Public Safety Center. And we held another meeting in March of 2025. Also, since the time of our, our foundation of this committee, we have applied for and received state grants totaling $40,000. And those are overseen by the Johnston County Heritage Commission for the following special projects. An historical tour guidebook that will include walking tours of local towns and thematic driving tours of historical sites in the county. These will be print, both printed and online editions. We also plan to have historical markers for Revolutionary War-related sites and other sites of special historical significance. And lastly, we're planning a mural in downtown Smithfield recognizing the Tuscarora people who inhabited Johnston County prior to the early 18th century. Once our committee was formed, we kicked off our, the first thing that we did was a subset group of our committee went in April of 2024 to historic Halifax, where they were having a living history event. And so that, that really, you know, wet our taste buds. So, you know, here's, here's what we can do. Here's what's possible. Subsequently, on August 12th of 2024, we held a countywide event ourselves. And this was a commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the Johnston Resolves, which was a revolutionary document adopted at the Johnston Courthouse on August 12th, 1774. It was held at the Johnston County Museum and featured a parade through downtown Smithfield led by Camp Flintlock's pipe and drum corps, followed by monologues portraying historical personalities from Johnston County during the Revolutionary Era. And I myself did play one of the parts of that little event. Thereafter, on August 24th, 2024, Camp Flintlock held a Colonial Fair, which was an all-day event and included parades. It had a children's parade. There were various booths. We, we had a booth and right next to us was the DAR. They had a traditional meal. They had musket firing. It was, it was just an all-day thing. So it was like going back in time, a slice of history right there. In the future, the plans that we have going forward include a countywide public event commemorating the 200, 280th anniversary of Johnston County ourselves, which that date is June 28, 2026, will be the 280th birthday of Johnston County or anniversary of the, and then the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence is July 4, 2026. So we have planned to hold our big event on June 27, 2026, so as not to conflict with town 4th of July events and other things. We kind of want to have a special 250th birthday, semi-quincentennial. And so on that day, that is going to be held at Johnston Community College campus. And it will include a parade, a living history encampment, cannon firing, various displays of art and historical items, artifacts. There will be performances, presentations in the auditorium. There will, of course, be food, vendor booths, information booths, tracing lineages, if you want to get into heritage and your own, your own past. Other things that we are planning besides that one day, there will be a production, our theatrical subset committee, Theatrical and Productions, has obtained the rights to the Broadway musical 1776. And that performance is being planned right this minute. I'm not exactly sure if it's going to be held in Clayton or if it could possibly be at the college. But that's in the works. The rights are secured. The educational committee is planning a heritage day for students when 250th birthday is really brought to bear and a full understanding will be appreciated for students in that regard. There are church observances being planned, veterans observances. We will have unveiling ceremonies for the various historical markers as well as the Tuscarora mural. And we are planning historical tours, both walking tours of the, all the towns in the county and thematic driving tours compiled as part of our grant-funded tour guidebook. We're also encouraging individual towns to, to get on board and have their rural communities plan their own special events and activities that, that they deem appropriate. So we've got a whole year of 250. But I think it'll be a great thing and I hope, hope we see all of you on June 27, 2026. And I, I hope, if you have any questions, I hope I can answer them or if not, we can, we can deflect to report back for you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Elsie?
I've done a lot of planning.
Yes.
We're looking forward to it. I think it's a great thing. It's 250 years of being Americans. Let's, let's celebrate that and look forward to it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a 4H shooting site at the Johnston County landfill. And our counsel, Jennifer Sluster, is going to present that to us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is really an update from something that the board had asked about earlier in the year. As you know, since at least 2011, Johnston County and Johnston County Cooperative Extension and its 4H programs have worked together over, by the landfill for an archery and air pistol target range for the 4H shooting sports programs. And as you know, those programs are extraordinarily popular. And 4H shooting sports programs are youth development education programs that use a prevention education model focused on safe shooting and conservation to enhance essential life skills. And so we have a lot of young people that are interested in these programs. And we have a lot of interest in shooting sports disciplines that include the firearms discipline programs. And locations for those practices are severely limited and currently are not allowed on the site that is utilized by the 4H shooting sports programs owned by Johnston County. And due to the interest in those programs, we have had the opportunity to talk with our cooperative extension partners. We've included other county stakeholders, including public utilities, the, the landfill operations, and the planning department to talk about, okay, so if Johnston County were to agree to expand services on that site, how could they be expanded and how could they be done safely? And through a series of meetings, we have come to the conclusion that that can happen with some relatively minimal nominal improvements to the site. And it would include some, bring in, you know, some dirt, some berms, making sure that everything is set up safely and appropriately. And fortunately, 4H has shooting sports standards that are very comprehensive. And so we have lots of guidance as to how that could be done and how it could be done safely. And, and so we have started putting together a draft memorandum of understanding. I'm not ready to present that to you yet because I wanted to, one, give you an update and two, get consensus that this was the direction that you wanted to go. And then we need to talk with our partners at NC State University to be sure that they are aligned with this as well. I know that Bryant and Meredith have already reached out to the university to talk about this. And, and we believe that it will be, it will be looked upon favorably. But we want to make sure that we talk with them a little bit more and then we'll be in a position to present that memorandum of understanding to you. I did want to point out, though, that one of the things that is very important about this proposal is, number one, it would be limited to Johnston County 4H shooting sports programs only through our cooperative extension office. And number two, that it's limited to two Saturdays a month unless there's written approval otherwise. And, and so the, there's not really going to be an increase of use of the facility. It's just that additional disciplines will be allowed. And there may be occasions in which they're preparing for competitions and that sort of thing, that they might want to utilize the facility leading up to that. And certainly, we can work with them through the county manager or the county manager's designee to make sure that that happens. But we want to make sure that it's done safely because we do have county operations out there. And we do have a farmer that actually does some maintenance out there for us as well. So we just need to make sure that all of those things are aligned. But wanted to make sure, number one, that we're even in the right direction as the board had requested. And number two, answer any questions that you might have about the proposed project. And Bryant, Meredith are here in case additional questions come up. And we've got Brastin here and Shandra and lots of folks that can answer questions if you have them.
All right, I would just say that, you know, having two or three years ago when we started this discussion, looking at JCC and it was not very fruitful. I'm very thankful that we have gotten to this point. And I will say largely to somebody who knows what they're doing in this and have been involved in many years in Commissioner Stovall. So I'm glad we've gotten to this point because I will say it's, it's an excellent group when you, and Commissioner Stovall can say more about it. But I'm, I'm looking forward to getting to where the 4H can use this facility and stay in the county with their training.
And it would be our goal to bring you a memorandum of understanding in August. If we can get it at the first meeting, that's what we'll do. If, if we can't, then hopefully mid-August. But we need to talk with our university partners just to make sure that they are aligned. But we will be prepared to bring you that memorandum for approval. And, and part of the reason that I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on this program today is that if there are any questions from the public, that they can reach out to the clerk and we can make sure that those questions get answered.
All right. Mr. Stovall, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to acknowledge that the, our club leader is in the audience, Jonathan Stovall in the back row. He is my son. I want just full disclosure on that. I have been a 4H leader for 25 years and I've been a target sports leader for 20 years. And I can tell you that this is an excellent youth development program. I've seen quite a number of kids come through this. It's a very popular program. We had to curtail registration each year simply because we did not have the, the facilities to be able to accommodate all of the program. And I think this is a very positive step to allow more youth to get involved. And I've seen youth come in here and it's a youth development program. And we, we're encouraging them to, to become more open, to be able to speak publicly with confidence, to conduct themselves with confidence and safety. And I've seen kids who transformed that they wouldn't even hardly talk to somebody, that more than willing to get up before the group and become an author in a club and, and speak fully. It's, it's very, very heartening to see, see that type of thing occur. And I appreciate the, the county willing to look, look at this and, and get us positioned where we can continue this program and see future 4H tend to be very prominent in Johnston County. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might say, I made comment of this at our gender review, but I might mention it since Brastin and Bryant and Meredith are here today. But I've got a source that has 100,000 cubic yards of dirt they need to get rid of. And that will be a key thing is getting that berm in place. And they will haul it. So let's not miss out on that opportunity.
And to piggyback on what Mr. Godwin said, everyone agrees that there will be no firearms disciplines until improvements are made at the property. But we're, we're excited about this opportunity and the expansion of these cooperative extension programs.
If I might add to Mr. Chairman Godwin's comments, I've done a calculation on what amount of soil that estimated we would need to put berms on the site. They'll be compliant with 4H and NRA standards. And I came up with 916 cubic yards, which is above, quite a bit less than 100,000 cubic yards. But that's what we're looking to find.
That's good.
All right, anything else?
I didn't, did y'all want to present or did y'all have anything to say? Since y'all, since y'all were here, I wanted to give y'all a chance to speak.
Oh, okay. Well, good morning. It's almost afternoon now. But I'm Meredith Wood. I am one of the 4H agents here in Johnston County. And so we're just really thankful for the consideration of this. The shooting sports program, as Mr. Stovall said, is very popular. We get lots of calls to our office. And so when we think about this, we, these kids think they're, they are out there shooting, but they're doing more than that. They're learning respect. They're learning discipline. They're learning responsibility. They're learning much more than just going out there with their friends and learning how to do something in a safe environment. And that is our top priority, is to be safe, to follow guidelines, to have best practices, to have emergency management plan, and make sure that our volunteers are trained and that we are keeping up with that. So that is something we take seriously. And we are just really grateful for the opportunity to bring this to our county because it will impact future generations. As you can see, we hope to continue this on for many, many years to come. So anything else for it?
Just by you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. We're very grateful.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have equally exciting, oh, no, this is equally exciting, too. The voting delegate for the 25, 2025 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference. I will say traditionally, on Saturdays, it's left with Commissioner Godwin and myself there. So I would keep on that tradition. I would consider, has the board to consider me being the delegate and Commissioner Godwin being the alternate.
Great idea.
All right.
Thank you.
We're doing this thing on Saturday.
That's right.
All right, now, even more exciting, we have our delinquent tax collection report from our tax administrator, Jocelyn Andrews. We want to finish with enthusiasm.
She's right here.
Yeah, yeah.
I was trying to say, were you getting ready to say delinquent tax collection report? The delinquent tax administrator, but anyone would believe that. Good morning.
President of the county board, yeah.
Good morning.
I am here. Well, excuse me. Good afternoon. I'm going to keep this very brief. Before you is the May collection report. As you can see, this does not go through the end of the fiscal year. There was one month left after this, but it got us to 99.78% with one month still to go. I will have that for you in two weeks, along with the year-end wrap-up for all things taxes. But this is what you have through the month of May. I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions?
And then when will the next year's tax bill go out? Won't that be in August?
August 4th.
Okay.
Two weeks from today.
Okay.
As of now.
Okay.
I was at a town hall meeting last week and their discussions at their town meeting was about collection of taxes. And someone there made a comment about, well, they'd already collected 99.85%. And I was proud.
My staff does a great job. I am very, very proud of the work they do.
Yeah.
All right, looks like there's no questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, badge reports and comments. Okay, that's about me. All right, that leaves us with the board reports. All right, that leaves us with the board reports and comments. So I'll start with Vice Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I had the, the distinct pleasure of attending the North Carolina Association of County Attorneys Conference, at least for about a 15, 20-minute window, uh, long enough to witness our very own Jennifer Slusser, our county attorney, be selected as County Attorney of the Year for North Carolina. So congratulations, Ms. Slusser. We're very proud of you and the work that you do. And, uh, you're, you're obviously very well thought of, uh, among your peers in other counties and around the state. And so, uh, just really well done, very proud of you for, uh, that accomplishment. And, uh, Mr. Hester and I, and, uh, Commissioner Godwin, and, uh, the sheriff were able to come down and, and spend a few minutes with you while you received your award. And so we just, uh, just wanted to mention that. So, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations. I will say, we start off the meeting with pictures. Can we, can we end this one with the picture?
Absolutely.
Yes, we all can be there. We'll get one now. You should have brought the award. You don't carry that around with you, do you?
No, no.
Okay.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
Me, I'd carry the round.
Congratulations.
All right. Commissioner Rose?
Uh, I think I'm good, all right.
All right.
Had a good time in the Cleveland Parade. It was nice. Uh, me and the chairman were in there, along with, uh, Craig Olive, and, uh, I think one Board of Education member said, um, great being able to be part of all the 4th of July activities the past couple of weeks and celebrations and, um, being part of the community while we were on a nice little break of not having meetings.
Yes, that was nice. We still did work, though.
But we still did a lot of work.
Richard Stovall.
I'm, I'm good. No comments.
All right. Commissioner Godwin.
You know, as we gathered, uh, Saturday to attend the, the Association of County Attorneys meeting, I thought about what Johnston County has produced. We've had the County Clerk of the Year in this state. We've had the 911 people. We've had, uh, the finance office every year gets an award. We've had a lot of state war, uh, award winners right here in Johnston County.
Yeah, absolutely.
Proud of this one.
PIO got a reward?
Yep.
Yeah, PIO, yeah. Nice. Yeah, that's right. The public information.
We made an economic development award thrown in there, too. You can never tell.
Chairman, I have one more second before you move on. I also want to recognize a couple of my fellow board members back there. Heidi Gilman is our, uh, executive director for downtown Smithfield, and she's been patiently sitting back there the entire time. Congratulations for making it through a long meeting, and I appreciate the work that you're doing with Smithfield. It's, it's fantastic. Really, uh, appreciate your leadership on that board. And also our DSS, uh, um, board chairman, um, we, we're happy to have you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you for being here with us today also. Thank you.
And then can I piggyback to you after?
Sure, sure.
Um, this past weekend was the Lemonade Chan, Stan Challenge with Isaiah House to help with DSS, and it was really great seeing all the different communities and small businesses coming together to support foster care here in Johnston County. So it was really great to see that. So thank you for also being here and being a part of that.
Yep, yep. All right. And I, I will continue on with, uh, Commissioner Godwin. As we were here, uh, we are very fortunate to have, uh, and we talk about county employees, and there's a reason, uh, they're one of our top six because they truly are, uh, number one, uh, across the board, uh, in the state of North Carolina, and as Vice Chairman Harris mentioned, you know, worldwide and something. So we're very fortunate to have the, the staff, uh, that we have, and, and a big thanks to them for all they do for us and for the citizens of Johnston County. With that, uh, we do have a need for a closed session, and I will say we will be going to lunch a little late, uh, to the, uh, we'll then have lunch with Soil and Water Conservation folks at the Ag Center. Uh, so we will be there as quickly as we can, but we do, do have a need for a closed session, and I'll entertain a motion to, for that now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the board go into closed session for the purpose of discussing matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4.
Second.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I will say there will be no action taken after this, so if we come out of closed session, we will, uh, move to adjourn. So, uh, with that motion and second, all those in favor going into closed session for the reasons stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We'll go into closed session after a minute to clear the room.